This regular meeting. November seventeenth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best law of the religion of justice.
All right, um, roll call please.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Forham.
Here.
Uh, Dean.
Here.
Hollar.
Here.
Goleman.
Here.
Um, give me motion someone to approve tonight's agenda.
Smooth.
Second. Thank you. Any questions, changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes of a November third regular council meeting. Uh, the claims for November seventeenth and a retail liquor license for the Down Under. You know, motion someone.
Someone.
Second. Um, the liquor license was there. Yeah, the legal trouble there. And that's that question? Nope, he's not here. Not here, is it? All right. I'm assuming.
Kathy's on. Kathy is on my Zoom. Where?
She's gonna join us.
I guess so. Hello.
Um. What was that? Any questions on the consent agenda?
Couple, I'm a couple.
Go ahead.
Painting class. Is that for the library or was that for parking wreck?
Yep.
Pass through so they they pay the fee, blah, 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 type. And then, uh. USA Today newspaper. For hard R new year.
That's for the library.
That's for the library.
Yeah, it's for people to come in and read.
Okay.
And it is for your.
Good.
That gets, that gets looked at, right?
Yes, actually. Yeah, yeah, they do.
Um, okay, thank you. Anything else, anyone? Otherwise, we will vote on the consent agenda. Go.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Forham?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Hollar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, presentations, communication, we, um, if you wanna talk to us, you can. Um, talk to us, we can't make any action, take any action, but we'll listen to you. So I think we have Forrest, uh. Brown would like to address us.
Hi, Forrest. Everyone. Thanks for hearing me out. I just, uh, wanted to come back. I, I talked with Adam and Roger a little bit after, uh. Uh, the approval last month, uh, and I, I thank you for the approval, but there is some. Some misunderstanding in, um, the. I guess the total dollar amounts, uh, that was never disclosed to me and I felt like, um. I needed to come back and talk to you guys about this. Uh, Roger and I had a very good conversation, very candid conversation and I'm. Apologize if I was, uh, get a little emotional, but it's, um. It, it didn't sit well with me and, uh, I, I guess I'd like to go back. And I, I know you guys can't vote on anything, but I'd like to review, you know, the process, what has all. Uh, gone on and I'll, I'll get into details of the, um, the misunderstanding on, on the amounts, um. So. When we decided to, um. Look at. Doing a building project, we were looking at other locations around and. I. Called Adam, asked him if there was any incentives, if we would, if we build, we would stay here in town. And at the time, and I know things have changed, but at the time, he said, yeah, there's probably like seventy percent. Uh, tax rebate that we can get you over ten years time period. And I said, man, that sounds awesome. That's, that's a great program. Yeah, we don't really wanna move out of town. Especially if, if they would do something like that for us. So, uh, at that time, um, said, yep, we, we're gonna start looking ahead. Project and I said, see if, if you can firm that up. Um, Adam had gotten back to me, said, you know, things have kinda changed. It's probably gonna be about fifty percent. Uh, rebate program. So at, at that point, I said, you know, that still is understandable. I, I know things have changed. That's a good, good rate. Um. Let's see if we can't move forward. In the meantime, we started looking at doing some site planning, um. Construction plans and, uh, Adam did get back to me and said, sorry, things have changed. All I think I can get approved, uh, will have passed council is twenty-five percent tax rebate. For a ten-year program. And, uh, so we did some budget crunching. We had already started, uh, the site plan. And like I said, the building plans and we thought about it and said, you know what? We wanna stay in West Ranch. So. Moving forward, um, talked with Adam. He said, yep, I got everything, uh, solidified on this. But there will be formality to go through to get this all finalized and that'll happen, you know, further down the road. So in the meantime, I'd asked, as we got this, um, closer, there is some, um. Some things that we had to do in terms of the, the site plan, uh, that had changes. I think you guys are aware of some of those things with the trees and shrubbery and, and whatnot. Uh, so Adam and I had been in, in conversation, uh, over this. And he said, yeah, once everything's done with the building permit, we will move forward on the vote for this. So at that point, I had asked Adam to go over in specific details. Of the rebate program. So we went over everything. He said it's twenty-five percent. It's not, it's not a, uh, deduction. It's a rebate. Understood that part of it. Uh, also, he said it's ten years. But not, uh, it may not be a full ten years because taxes are always in arrears. Even said that, uh, the, the assessment when they usually come out to assess the property, once it's all done, is on an odd year. Um, so it would be probably this, like, I mean, twenty-five probably won't be done again till twenty-seven. So, uh, he explained in details the, um, the timeline on things. So I understood it may only be, say, eight or eight and a half years that the rebate would come into play. When came here, uh, came here with my daughter, uh, in the last month and. We went through, the vote passed and. At that time, right at the end of the vote, said ten years. On a hundred and two thousand dollars. So. It didn't click. You gotta be honest. It didn't click with me right away, this hundred and two thousand. So on my way home, I kept replaying this in my mind, thinking, what's the hundred and two thousand dollars? So I don't know if it was Tuesday or Wednesday later that week, I called Adam and asked him, what's the hundred and two thousand? Is that like, you know, a year, a hundred and two thousand dollars a year? Cause this is pretty expensive project that we got going on. And he said, no, that's, it's a hundred and two thousand dollars total. It's all, it's all it's gonna be paid us. And I said. That was never disclosed. You know, it's always been talked that it was twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, excuse me, twenty-five percent. Um, that, that has never been disclosed, never was. So he said, well, you're, you're gonna have to talk to Roger about that. So that's when I picked up the phone, called Roger. And said, you know, this, this just doesn't feel right, you know, uh, from my standpoint, uh, that. If, if you look at the timeline, like I said, um, where things have been dropped down, um. And then this wasn't disclosed. I, I reached out to, uh, the county assessors and, you know, trying to get some, some. Excuse me, some idea what my taxes are gonna be on this. And, you know, it looks like it's gonna be well over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, I looked at some other properties around the area, um, Beacon, see what their tax rates are. And, you know, I feel like, you know, this, this is really only gonna last like three years. Um. That, you know, even although I appreciate the help on it, it's not what we had, um, talked about. And this was never disclosed. I know you guys can't vote on this, you know, thing tonight. I just feel like it's, it's not right. And I'm not asking for, um, an increase. I mean, I think we. I heard that night that the project across the interstate from us is at like a forty-three percent rate. Not asking for anything like that. I'm just asking for twenty-five percent for ten years. Is what we, we talked about. I mean, that's, that was always what was talked about, uh, with me. Now, um, I also. In that conversation with Roger and asked him, um, where does, where does a hundred and two thousand dollars come up? Because that's seems like an arbitrary number to me, you know? Um, so, you know, talking a little bit more, said, well, that's what we gave to the, the dentist clinic. And that's what they capped it at. And I go, well, what was that based on? Said that was based on their, the budget number that they had in the building permit. So, well, that's ten percent of that. And although that dentist clinic is a beautiful building. And, and a great asset to the community. It's not, we're not comparing apples to apples. Um, our project is way more expensive than that. Um. And I, I just feel like. Uh, it, it, it just didn't set well. I think I mentioned that to Roger a number of times. This, this just does not set well with me. I, I feel like I'm being deceived. So. With that, I, I don't know if you have any questions for me. But, um, and I know there can't be anything voted on.
You think that building's worth, I think about a million dollars, dental building. How much is yours gonna be?
That building permit was for three point two.
Right?
We.
That's kind of the heart of his complaint, that. He thinks his building's gonna be three times valued of the dental building. That he should've got three times what the dental building. Got. So I'm just paraphrasing what our conversation is. That's. So what would have to happen is I believe one of us would have to re. We'd have to bring it back. To, uh. To the agenda.
A yes vote, a yes vote could bring it back.
Right.
No vote cannot bring it back.
Correct. Okay, yeah.
Yes, what I'd like to explain from my side is I always preface this. Because things change, councils' minds change. Any type of percentage I talk with someone, I make it clear it's council that sets the percentage, not me. When we originally were talking, I said, I've seen commercial go up to seventy percent. I didn't say that you would get, be guaranteed to get seventy percent. Then we ran into the state changing how property tax laws work. And so when we talked about fifty percent, we were talking with Colton. On the council and you were going to potentially. Put in a bike trail and do some improvements to the road, but you haven't done improvements to the road. Or the bike trail and you didn't get direction from council. I even brought you out here and it sounded like council wasn't interested. And so the basics that we have been doing ever since HF seventeen eighteen got passed has been twenty-five percent. For ten years, at ten percent of the value of. The property and where the property number comes from is yes, it comes from the dental office. And what their office is and it's not. I need a number from. The assessor to say it's going to be three point two million. I haven't gotten anything from the assessor that will say it's anything. So I went off of. What we did in the past because we've had internal arguments about what is the world TIF? What percentage should we do? So I was trying to do. My right thing in making sure that those contracts were the same because that was a discussion that had been happening internally. And so that's where, where I went with the one hundred and one thousand.
Um, okay. Not opposed to discussing it again? I don't know if I can bring it back or not. I don't know if I can. The council person will have to, a yes vote. Was it five oh or I don't know, doesn't have.
No, it's the main is to bring a motion, you have to have a second and then you motion reconsider and then.
Yeah. But that's.
Does that have, does that have to be put on the agenda?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Different meeting, different, different time.
Right.
And I don't know if we wait until we get a value of the building. That's which is two years from now. Maybe that's too far ago, but I mean. He's probably gonna.
Does it have, does it have to be a limit on? On what we're given?
Yes. Yes. It is a state law. It's a part of that HF seventeen eighteen, did a whole bunch, whole bunch of property and TIF changes. Property tax and TIF changes.
But could we do, I think we've done this for like city lights and stuff. I mean, little lights and stuff like that where we took. What we thought the perceived value was, three point five or whatever, the ten percent, and we said not to exceed that amount. So if for some reason this building doesn't come in assessed, he's only gonna get twenty-five percent of what it's assessed at.
Of the increment.
Right.
The value right now doesn't.
Right.
Of the increment.
Well, Little Lights, she, she's gonna be a hundred and fif- one point five million dollar building. We gave her up to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right. And once that a hundred and fifty grand's out, or the ten years, whatever comes first, she's done.
And she only, and the way we wrote that, if you remember, she had the, used half of fifty thousand a year also, um.
That was correct.
That, so that she had ten years of fifteen thousand. If you look at the, oh, if I remember most of the, we, she's, we've done fifty, I think it's.
So we, so we laid that out, which she was never gonna get more than her ten percent.
Right.
Versus, but she was gonna get it for the whole ten years.
Yes.
As long as, as long as.
As long as she, as long as she had that.
Some of them we've done though, it's not to exceed this amount. You get this percentage and when you're done, we hit that amount, you're done. Though, you know, those are kinda nice, cause then they, they get off the books faster if.
Right.
And the percentage of the building, percentage, that's something privy to when I. I obviously wasn't here. It makes sense, but I was not privy to. Um, Little Lights and how that came about, that was before me.
Casey's was a little different, cause they did all.
Cause they did all that work, yeah. But you, even they had a max amount.
Right.
This percentage or this amount, and if your project costs more than this amount, well, too bad, so sad.
Yeah.
So some more slurries.
Um. So I need to do some. Some investigating and more digging here. Just, just to find out a value of the building, first of all?
Well, for one, to find out the value, the increment value, not, not the value of the whole, oh, the whole project. It's gonna be the increase of value. Right.
Okay.
But the, the, the current property as it's valued right now, shouldn't be, shouldn't go down.
No, but you're only, you're only, we're only tipping the, the increment, not, not what it is total.
But the building would be the increment. Won't, won't that be the increment?
So the.
Right. For the bike sales.
Right now, I just, it looks like they have two parcels, but I have a seven hundred, nine thousand, eight hundred dollar value on those. One of them's like the vacant lot, that's like a hundred and eleven thousand assessed right now, but I think you paid seven forty or something like that. But I saw the, whatever you, whatever the value was there. So, I mean, I would think, maybe, I haven't been out there, how much of your project is done?
Uh, we're probably a third of the way.
Okay, so I would assume that they're gonna do a partial assessment, which they do on.
January.
Every, yeah, because there's a, they see that there's a building permit, so they will do a partial assessment. That's not gonna give you the full value though. I don't, I'm guessing they won't tell you the, they're not gonna say what the full value is gonna be.
They don't until it's done.
Right. So if I just did a quick off the napkin thing, so if it was valued at four million, then let's just say three point two million would be the increment. That would be like eighty-four thousand a year for the, the increment taxes, a hundred and four total. Hundred and four total would be about what I threw together in like two minutes here. So, so if you did twenty-five percent of that, that would be like twenty-one thousand. So. If that was what the, what the value was.
So, so really it's gonna be twenty-eight. If, if they don't assess until twenty-seven. We're a year behind, so they assess in twenty-seven, we won't know what it's valued at until twenty-eight.
But the way the agreement's written is you, you have, until he gets his occupancy, or the whole thing. I mean, I, I'm guessing you don't wanna take a partial assessment. You might have did ten, you wanna get this much on the full value is the, so.
Right.
And it's obviously, remember, it's not the total taxes because, uh, I use twenty-nine dollars for the TIF rate. It's twenty-eight, twenty-nine, somewhere in that.
And it's gonna change again.
Yeah, it changes every year, so.
And then there's a rollback too.
Yeah. The rollback, at least on this one, is still ninety percent. They haven't changed that at all, so.
Right.
So that's what I was looking at, was like the incremental taxes paid would be like eighty-four thousand a year. If that, if, if they just put three point two, which is on your boundary and then just added that, that was just that off the huff. So.
So ten percent of that. Yeah.
Somehow we gotta get to a max dollar, then, well, somehow, if, if we're gonna consider it.
But I think what you're, what you're saying is we had one point five for Little Lights, we just took ten percent of that.
Percent.
But he.
Ten percent of the.
That is valued at four million, then you took ten percent of that, that's four hundred thousand instead of one. I'm just, just the way I was following what he got talking about. It's obviously.
I don't remember what her percentage was, though, what percentage?
She was, she was ten.
Ten percent.
One point five million dollar value and then a hundred and fifty total was what her maximum.
She's never been assessed at one point five.
But yes, but yeah.
Uh, she's close.
She's close. She gets, she gets the fifteen thousand every year. I think she's hit that every year since.
Okay, Forrest, I guess what I can tell you is we'll, we're gonna talk about it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, and, and, well, no, again, I, I just, uh. Yeah, it didn't quite register and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. And, uh, again, I just hope that it gets to be twenty-five percent over the ten years and if that really only is eight and a half. That's great.
Okay, I will, I'll talk behind the scenes and try to.
Appreciate it.
Find someone with an appetite to bring about it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Forrest.
Anyone else, uh, wanna chat with us? Okay. Third reading of ordinance eight thirty-three. Providing the general taxes levied and collected on certain lots at the Meadows. Um, Parkside Hills and the dental office. Be paid as special fund for repayment of, uh, monies. For, for advanced indebtedness. For TIF payments.
Thank you. You know, I'll read my whole title.
Nobody'll get it.
Second.
Oh, thank you. Um. Are there any questions? So this is, uh, the, the old apartment buildings at, uh, Parkside Hills up on the, they got finished? Well, no.
It's, it's all.
It's the original.
The Parkside Hills, it's the dental office and it's the. I think one house in the Meadows four A, four B was last one that was last.
Oh, still new, one new one?
There's one more new one, yeah.
Okay.
So it all, it all's in Parkside Hills?
It's all the lots that are, that he controls. It's not, uh, yeah. Yeah. So it's, yeah. So like the one that's already half built up, we didn't put that in there, cause.
Just the one that's fully built.
Yeah, I mean, with the, like, the one that's not, if he doesn't own, we put that in there. Cause there's one that, uh.
You didn't own, you didn't buy the second one, the.
Oh, he bought both. I'm talking about, isn't there one where townhouses in the middle of it already?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of time.
Okay, okay.
And none of the duplexes.
Right, yeah, the one, we're not putting stuff in the thirty build.
Right. It's also includes the, yeah, BP store.
Oh, that was thirty, that was thirty, yeah.
We did that.
That, they're getting paid on that.
All right, I saw that later in the report.
Yeah.
That's where I saw that.
Yeah. All right.
Yep.
Okay, so this is to allow us to collect the monies and put them in the TIF fund. That's what this is for?
As, it says the base value, yes.
Sets the base value.
Yeah, all right. So then the increment is on the, over the base value.
Done. Okay.
So that, that first building that he built.
Not gonna get much of it.
I was gonna say, that's probably already been assessed.
He might've got, he might, the one has at least a partial, so there won't be much on that.
Yeah.
So. So.
Any questions, anyone else? All right, let's vote on the third reading of the.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Forham?
Yes.
Like Goleman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Resolution twenty-five, one twenty, approving the submission. The City of West Ranch Annual Finance Report to the State Auditorium. We motion someone.
Smooth.
Second.
Uh, so this is the, the annual report that, uh, we submit to the Department of Management yearly basis. These are the actual expenses and revenues for the past fiscal year, which was this whole year, twenty-five. Um. I can, if you have questions, um, I can take those now. I did a very, um. Brief, um. Uh, comparison between, uh, this FY twenty-five and FY twenty-four. Um, if you guys are interested in that, I can go over that, uh, for expenses and revenue.
Um, assuming both of them went up, if you figure out which chart.
No, right, so for just. Uh, public safety, um, I'm doing it by program, which is how the annual finance report, um. Is structured. Um, police operations, um. Went up from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five by forty-two percent. Um, if it's a big jump, uh, but then again, we had, we added a, a police officer. Um, wages went up for everybody. Um. And, um. I mean, really, that was, that was kind of the major thing, um. Fire operations, uh, it went up seventy-one percent from, uh, twenty-four to twenty-five.
That was a purchase of the truck.
No, it was not. It was the air packs. Uh, it was a ninety thousand dollar, uh, expense. Um, and also, uh. You know, some salary, salary differences as well. Well, they're not salary, but they're.
Yeah.
Um, their payments, um. Building inspections, um, there was not much of, of a hike, but it, it was eight percent, um, that it went up. Um. The, uh, for Public Works, um. Overall, there was a sixteen percent jump. Um, there was, uh, forced oil removal. It was a double from this year to last year. I'm gonna see, I can't remember last winter, but maybe there was more snow the year before. I, I, I don't know. Um, and of course, you know.
There was.
Yeah. Yeah.
There were the big snow drift at the.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that that was part of it. Or, uh, Parks and Rec, there was a thirty two percent increase. Uh, but that is because of the special capital improvements, um, projects. The Hoover, uh, Trail Bridge was one of them, and also the pickleball paint, uh, project as well. Um, was another one. Let's see what goes on there. Cemetery also went up by nineteen percent. Uh, some of it was salary, some of it was, uh, the equipment, um, so what Matt does is if there's a big, uh. Equipment purchase, he divides it between cemetery, water, sewer, et cetera. Let's see. The other one I would say is probably kinda, I was, um. The, uh, sewer bunch, um, it went up fifty five percent. Um, and some of it was salaries, um. There was a huge in utilities, um, so electricity, but that's because. Of our sewer, our. Use our plan.
So now, Heidi, you're telling us the these are. It going up, right, the expenses.
Expenses.
But obviously with the rate hikes and stuff and adding people on. Well, the money we've been bringing in went up.
It went up as well, yeah, that's correct.
Right.
That's correct.
So you're, these numbers are kinda painting a bad picture, but we're not talking about what the, what the income part of.
It's not really a bad pic, it it's just a comparison and expenses, um, but if if we were gonna get to the revenues. Um, which are separate, as you know, uh, in this report, revenues are separate than our expenses. Uh, for our taxes levied, um, it went up sixteen percent in revenue. Um, for, um. Our, uh, miscellaneous, which includes, uh, permits, um, charges. It went up from seventy seven thousand two hundred and sixty nine to two hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and three, so yes, in all. In almost all except for license and permits, that went down. Um, there is an increase in 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 all the different revenues. And if you wanna get the, it's it's a huge report, but if you wanna get the detail of it all, please come and stop by my office and. Uh, but yeah, we're just as Colton pointed out, um, and that was gonna be my my second point, it. Revenues went up in in every single category, which is taxes levied, um, TIF revenues. Uh, what they consider other ci- city taxes, which is our lost, um, our our road use tax as well. Um. Like I said, license and permits that went down. Um, use of money and property, um, that is, uh, cemetery plots. Um, that also, uh, went up. Um. Charges for fees and services went up as well. Um, like I said, the miscellaneous, that was the, that was the biggest jump. Um, other financing sources, what that's all our bond proceeds and our SRF. That also went down, but that is a good thing too, because. That's stuff we have to pay back.
All right. For you, I'm sure.
Any other questions for me on anything? Specific?
That I just touch on. Road use tax, I mean, that didn't, or road use income, revenue. Yeah. Didn't go up as much as. As, um. Our expenses go up.
Um.
Revenue didn't keep up with our expense on road use tax, on road use.
Wait, with road, so for expenses for, um, road use, there's our general fund. Uh, streets fund, and then there's the road use tax fund. Road use tax fund is a special revenue. We can only use that money for streets. Et cetera, salaries, yeah. Um, and that's actually where most of our salaries come from is road use tax, uh, because we are, we're trying to. Um, protect our general fund money, uh, we 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 don't use our streets. Um, general fund as much as road use tax. Um.
So road use tax is based on population, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So that's on the census of twenty twenty. Do we know how many? Um, how much of the population we have raised, increased, I should say, since twenty twenty?
I've seen estimates of twenty seven hundred, I've seen estimates of up to thirty one hundred.
So.
Rolling increase. For capital.
It's an increase.
I tell a census.
Tell a census.
Twenty thirty.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Or we have a special.
Which costs millions of dollars.
Take five years to do.
And I'm saying this because Tiffany is going through that right now. And I I I've spoken to their assistant city administrator, and it's a very expensive. Endeavor.
Now, they've grown to the point where it's probably.
It's worth it for them.
Worth it for them.
I'm not sure it'd be worth it.
I think I saw where it was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the special census.
Yeah, I didn't think it was in the millions.
It's not millions, but it is very expensive.
And it takes.
But it's also lost that we, no, it's not lost, it's just. Kevin's point, takes a while, usually you don't see years, two or three years later.
So you almost have to do this special like right away if you're going, does.
Which, which wouldn't do you any good, because.
Yeah, a year ago, you would have got to, you're not gonna grow that fast. But there's stuff, but.
But now, yeah.
But now, they're probably not gonna get it till twenty seven, so they're gonna get like three or four years worth of it.
Yeah.
So.
Got you. Good.
Yeah, depends on it. I think I read that was was the road use going to estimate a buck next year, maybe.
Not, not even.
No, not even that.
Fifty cents?
Seventy cent.
Yeah.
Seventy percent or seven percent.
Yeah. So.
Okay, um, any other questions for?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we got a motion to approve this report to be. Ordered to the state, so let's go ahead and vote, please.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes.
All right, resolution twenty five one twenty one directing the finance officer to certify tax increment financing debt. To the Cedar County Auditor.
Smooth.
Second. This is a, I did this report and Heidi helped me with it, um. Essentially, we report to the county every time we have a new TIF district or we have a new project. Or money is going to be allocated, and then you also report your current. What's being spent, so to summarize. Where all of our TIF spending is going in that cover sheet, but that's essentially what that report is, is. We have to report every year what's new, what's existing and how much. And I think we have to, and then how much we owe on certain debts, and then interest.
Right, so, um, we have to report the, as Adam stated, we have to report. The things that are coming on to our TIF books, if you will, um, and it is, um. The twenty twenty five bond payment, just a TIF portion of how we're gonna pay that bond. Um, and I think it was the dental, um, the dental office. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but it is the dental. The rebate as well. Um, and then the form, the rest of the forms, um, form two, it is, uh. Specifying our annual appropriations, uh, for TIF rebates and also for our bond payments as well.
Why is the dental office singled out in that one form?
Because it's an, it's new, it's new to to our TIF certification.
Okay.
It's the first time that is coming on into our TIF books, if, yeah, that's, that's the way to explain it. So this tells the county, hey, we have a new TIF rebate agreement, and this is what this is. Uh, same with, uh, twenty twenty five, uh. Bond agreement as well.
See, okay.
And also to point it out, you know, this, these are estimates, because we really don't know until January. So we're only, we're estimating that this is how much it's gonna be.
Okay.
So parts of Parkside Hills is not. So that's not part of this. How about Heritage Hills? Any, any of that new, nothing should be on you?
Uh, Heritage Hill is already on there. It's BB code.
Could be a code.
I think we're quite a bit. It was eight thousand last year, now it's seventy three, and it'll probably grow a little bit more. And it's the next phase, it's a success.
Yeah. Yeah, this is where I see the, uh, advantage rentals. That must be the BB building.
That's the BP commercial plaza. Yeah.
Okay, we've seen most of these before. Going to for a while yet. Where's? EMV, that's low lights. Where'd that interest come from and who gets that? Thirty five hundred dollars.
It's, it's, well, we get it, um, so we, uh, through our checking, um, accounts that we have. We, um, get interest from that, and then we divide it up between different funds. The TIF fund is one of those funds, and by law, we have to decertify the interest that we earn on that TIF fund. So we have to decertify it to the county so that they know that they have to take it off.
Interesting.
Interesting.
Okay. Um. We got a motion to approve, so let's, um, vote again, please.
Councilperson Miller?
Wait a minute, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I see one, someone, one of them on here. I just wanna make sure that we are not voting to appropriate any of this money. This is just another part of the report, correct?
It is, it is to ask for money that for FY twenty six.
Then, no, I don't know.
Is the, uh.
The. Age fifty. Age fifty. No, age forty nine.
That's a different, different report. That's, you know, that's.
That's annual.
Yeah, they're not on this.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not on, we're not certifying anything for them.
You're a resolution ahead.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're gonna scare me there.
The yes is no.
We already have, uh, a debt to it.
No, we should approve all of them.
Yeah, then yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's our first vote, all right.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. All right, an easy pay estimate, resolution twenty five one twenty three.
Wait a minute. Yeah, our first year of renewal.
And we knew a report.
Gosh.
Yeah.
This is twenty five one twenty two. Uh, proving the submission of annual urban renewal report.
Smooth. So then my question about that is it's it's on there.
But it's.
No.
But it shows that we're not paying them anything, right? We're just showing that it's still on for like ever, right?
Yeah, so, but they're not getting anything.
So the, this.
For bringing no money to nobody.
No, this is our report for FY twenty five, so we're looking backwards again. As to what the expenses and the revenue was for our TIF. Our TIF fund.
So this is a backward.
So this already happened.
Yeah.
It it's done, it's, it's already all the TIF, um, rebates, rebate payments and the TIF, um. Payments to pay for our bonds.
This isn't complicated enough, and then you go two years back and recreate. What came out of all these bubbles, and this is our updated TIF urban renewal area maps. So we have to literally know how much came out of all of them and report on that.
That's why there's so many pages. Good.
So if you look at, um, that first page of the urban renewal report. Uh, that is the summary, um, so we started the fiscal, fiscal year twenty five. With a hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty seven dollars in our TIF fund. Uh, the revenue for FY twenty five was six hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen. Um, there's that interest that we just decertified. Um, and so then with all that, the total revenue for FY twenty five TIF only, remember, only them. Was six hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and twenty three. That's what we actually collected for FY twenty.
That's an incremental increase of the real estate. In these districts.
And and for those, that debt.
That you asked for.
That you asked for, so the the TIF certification, that's how we get this money from the county.
You actually get way more TIF money.
We, yeah.
Create or.
Available.
Available.
We have a lot more available, we're only asking for that amount. And then the rebate expenditures for FY twenty five was two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and eighty nine dollars. The non rebate expenditures, that is all of our debt that pays for our loans, just a TIF portion of it. Um, and that total for expenditures was seven hundred and twenty four thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars.
That's forty thousand more than the revenue.
Right, um, what I did, it, that's a fair point. What I did last year FY twenty five was I paid, um. Certain rebate payments more, because if you remember in FY twenty one, um, we forgot to pay. Um, all our rebate payments. So we, I, I, last year was the year where I caught. Those rebate.
We're all thought of, no.
Yes. Yeah. The money was there, it's, it was in a balance, it's it's just we had not paid them, so.
Yeah.
Last year, um. I I took that the time to, um. Uh, run those numbers and then, um, everybody's caught up now.
And then all these projects are listed from. The last payout.
So, yeah, so the 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 projects for, um, that we're using for, uh, with TIF are, are. Are there? They're all there.
Yeah.
Um. Some of them are probably gonna fall off here at the end of this fiscal year. Um, and then after that, in order for us to collect any TIF revenues, we have to have a debt obligation. Um, so there's a project, we have to have a project, and then of course debt. Um, and then, so there's all our our debt obligations for TIF. And then you're gonna see, of course, our, um, rebate developers agreement, rebate payments. Um, bond payments. And. Then it is, uh, divided where it says rebates for West Branch Urban Renewal. Uh, those are just the the rebate payments that we paid out for FY twenty five. And, uh. Axion is still there, because technically they're still in our. TIF books. Um, but we have not appropriated any money. And then, uh, the rest of it is, uh, divided into the TIF taxi districts as to how. Where we're collecting that TIF revenue and what districts. And also I wanna point out to you that for a summary page, um, remember that we also have. Uh, LMI fund that is coming from Meadows Part Four. Uh, and we have to keep that fund separate, um. Once we, you know. Write a policy as to how we wanna use that money, uh, we can, we can spend that. Write a policy as to how we wanna use that money, um we can, we can spend that. Then LMI is for those moderate income.
So before we go any farther, um I got a question on Axion. Now that they've been taken over by Nordak. Are we obligated?
Well, here's, here's the thing. They've never transferred the title to the property still in Axion's name.
They called it a merger.
Yeah, yeah, they tried to, that's why they, that's the way. So I'm getting, I'm talking to our, we had outside council do this for us, so I'm gonna, I'm getting the settlement agreement from them. And we're writing a letter and say, okay, this is, this is a charade ridiculous. So can we just end this? And then we can take it off their renewal report if they agree to end it.
Yeah, because every year we, we deny this and it's like.
I mean, yeah, I have the same thing, but they, I, I even look.
So it, it, there's no ending.
Yeah, cuz the, the way that.
Years, but we've only used.
Yeah, but.
Four.
It was still subject to annual appropriation, so. Yeah, so I am actually just gonna, I mean, that's what, if you look online, it's still under Axion and Wing Power. The uh property is even though it's, don't even their site might say Nordex, so.
So we think that they'll ever come back to us and say, well, we got our employees, that's the.
Doesn't matter because it's stuff they need to appropriate, but we don't, under the agreement, you, you can, if you don't appropriate, they have no remedy.
Right.
So. The re, the, the, the uh settlement agreement I don't have in front because the outside council will get for me. Says that we would, we, we would look at it every year. Well, we looked at it.
You only have to consider it.
We, we considered it. We did get one because it wasn't on our certification. So.
So.
Yeah, so.
So if they, if they don't agree to end it, then we're just gonna keep doing this.
We, we can't take it off their renewal for it, just keep saying zero. Because once everything's paid off, you can take it off their renewal credit, I think. So but since it's about technically ended.
So they're gonna have to come to us, prove they have met their obligation. But then we only have to consider it anyhow.
Yeah, I think.
To do that whether they come to us or not.
Yeah, that's right.
I, I just think the whole thing's ridiculous. You know, all, all we do is. You know, kick each other in the teeth every year over this deal.
Yep.
Where, you know, they're not gonna get it.
Yeah. I agree. I mean, if, if for some reason they came back with a new job thing, I would end that agreement and they have to do a different one. We're not gonna sit on that one again.
I mean, that's, that's their plan, right? I mean, their plan is to have. Lot more than a hundred people up there.
But I would have a brand new agreement.
Yeah.
And more building, right?
No, just, they've already expanded the building slightly. There, there might be more real estate.
But we're, we're collecting the tip off that building in perpetuity cuz it was.
Right.
So. Then we don't take it, I don't believe, so.
Well, we're not, it's available, but we're not taking it. I mean, that's what the, that TIF appropriation.
We would have a source to pay them if they were kind of different agreement. It's just that. I'm not, yeah, we're not gonna use that one. It's gonna be a lot more. They did the agreement, they wrote it themselves, so if I remember correctly, so.
All right, let's move on. So, you ready to vote on this?
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Horahan?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Thank you, Heidi.
You're welcome.
Uh Resolution one twenty-three, approval estimate number one. Uh one hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and eight cents to PCI for the channel widening project.
Move.
Second.
I just wanna comment, it's nice to see. People working there and not an excavator and a dump truck sitting there and then getting a bill for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
They've done way more work.
Nobody, oh yeah.
Say so too, you know.
We, we'll get another one next time.
We didn't have a place for that liquid or that.
Oh man, that's a beautiful dirt, ain't it?
Anderson's getting it.
I know.
Okay, any other comments? You agree with that? Well, yeah, David is with it. He made it up. Um let's vote, please.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Uh Horahan?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes. By the way, they bought the bridge themselves. Were pretty cheap. And, and they cut it up and scrapped it.
All right, Resolution twenty-five, one twenty-four, pay estimate number six. The amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and eight cents to Boomerang for the Cedar Johnson Road project.
So move.
Um then they're about done, so.
Hope so. They haven't been there for a few years, but we got left.
And or can we go next?
Before we gotta open it up?
No, signage. I think they need some signage.
What else needs to be?
Are we striped? Are we striping the road? What about the, no passing?
That was extra.
Probably worth giving it up. Gonna get their string out there.
Let's uh go ahead and vote, Elishman.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Horahan?
Yeah.
Uh Resolution twenty-five, one twenty-five, change order number four, the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred to Boomerang. For uh a yard remodel on Cedar Johnson Road project.
So move.
Second.
All right, this is uh Tim Stull's yard. It needs some. Different work other than what was planned, so.
This work that's been done or work that's gonna happen?
Work that will happen.
Yeah.
It's a in, intake and a covert.
That a galvanized viper hungry.
Yes, um. It's a uh poly fight. I don't know, I think we need to do it. I walked over it, it's, needs to be done. Any other comments?
So that's gonna have an intake on the south side of his driveway, that will be decided?
Yes. About ten yards on the concrete, ten or fifteen. It'll be a flat intake, so get long right over it.
Is this part of that fifty thousand that they're overages? Is this part of that or is it even more than that?
No, there's a summary on the back of that pay estimate area that we just approved that talks about where things are at. So if you look at the change order total on this right now, um. They're about fourteen thousand, maybe fifteen thousand over on the uh change order items, one through three. Uh that does not include the retaining wall because that was not done as part of the project, so it's not a change order. That was a separate agreement. So that's another seventeen. So that gets us to the, uh, maybe not what you're thinking.
Okay.
So. Uh this would be above that, this would be another eleven three, so. Uh in total, if you looked at that pay estimate, we were ninety-five percent, we're tracking pretty good. Even with those overages, there were some quantities that were in there. For example, we had a full quantity for importing everything and there was some, we could use it in the project. There are some quantities there that uh as we get to the end of this, it's going to be very close to right on the bed number. So even with uh this extra work.
So the, just a. What question for me? The dirt that they got just north around the freeze farm, was that figured in as the dirt that was gonna? That's due to landscaping or were we gonna haul dirt in?
No, that, that's the uh topsoil import number, so if you look in the pay estimate, there was a um, the topsoil strip salad and spread. And the topsoil furnishing spread, those writings, one eight, one nine. We put the same quantity in both, not knowing with this being an older um. County roadway, seal coat, all that gravel that's in there, if you're gonna try to peel that off and reuse it, it could have been all junk, so. We figured we put in full import, and if they had to use it all, they use it all. If they could save some from what was there, we would do that. And they were kind of doing a hybrid as they went along. Some of it was good, some was not.
Good question, good question.
Well, that. They would have to truck that in, that would. Twice as much. Long.
Okay. Well, this is just the change order, eleven, eleven three, so any other questions? Motion to approve, go ahead, please, solution?
Uh Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Horahan?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
All right, um twenty-five, one twenty-six resolution, amending the employee handbook. Move to action. This is concerning a change of vacation, I mean sick pay. In exchange for a vacation, so give me a motion, someone.
I'll do it.
Start it.
Well, I think the employees have worked hard, it seems like a decent proposal. We don't. City doesn't lose any hours. We don't. We don't lose any hours. They're giving up. Some sick time in exchange for a vacation day.
Thanks, Felicia worked really hard on this, so I prefer she presented just a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I talked with um several employees, we were discussing the uh who was gonna be here and who wasn't with uh the day after Thanksgiving. Uh that had been a day off in the past. And it sounded like most of the employees, that was a pretty important date for them, um as far as. Obviously spending time with family, a lot of times traveling or traveling from one family to the next because, you know, we all have everyone's family to go through a lot of times. So, uh. In, in talking with everyone, there would really only be about three employees that were not gonna take that day off. That we're gonna have to use vacation or sick time. Um. Looking at that, there's really not. A lot of traffic at all. Um because typically people think it's, we're closed and it's a holiday, there wouldn't be really a business need for us to be open that day. Um so it doesn't take anything away from, from our work for the city as well. Um the library also presented to their board, they, they would like to have the library closed because looking at their numbers, they have. No traffic in the library. That was approved by the library board. So that was the only way that they could potentially have all of their staff off as well. Um. Kind of talked with Colton as well. Colton was in here and, and we kind of chatted about. What the conversation was before whenever the holidays were switched and Juneteenth was added and this holiday was taken off and it sounded like. There needed to be some compromise on that. It wasn't just gonna be a complete added holiday to make it full holidays a year. So when I was looking at the sick time. Uh we currently get three point six nine hours of accumulation every pay period. If we went to something as simple as three point five every accumulation and just took that point one nine off. It would come up to five hours coming off of the total sick time every year. So it'd be a compromise of giving some of that time back to the city and taking that as a holiday. Um all of the employees were in agreement. Um you can see a lot of are here tonight or they're on um to hear about it. Because it's, it's something that's really important to every employee here, so.
Okay. Um. I agree.
I, I think it's a legitimate compromise. Originally, my position was just give them the day, it'd be a lot less confusing, but. Um, um I think originally they, they weren't asking for the day. They weren't asking for an extra holiday. Um but um I, I think they made a reasonable compromise, not being favorable.
Well, I got something to say. Um I was on the council when we first gave uh the employees this day. And the reason we gave it to them was because we went two years without giving them a raise. Now all of a sudden, we're, we've gone from giving them a raise to giving them an extra day off. Um sick leave is a city-funded insurance policy. It's to be used for the actual occasions when the employee is sick. It's not a benefit. Vacation is a benefit. The city of West Branch, I've reviewed how much vacation is given, is very generous. If they wanna take that day off, take it off as a, as vacation day. Um. Vacation plus the federal holidays. We give our employees more than enough time off when you compare it to the public sector. I can guarantee you, when I worked at Mercy Hospital, we had to take vacation days on Christmas. So I think they ought to be kind of thankful for the time off that, that the citizens of West Branch are giving them, and I'm gonna be voting no on this.
And I just, I just wanna make uh. A comment. Um. I, you know, uh Tom has his opinion, but. Vacation and sick leave are benefits.
No, they're not. No, they are not. They're two separate things. They are two separate things, Heidi. Vacation is a benefit. If you don't use your sick leave, you don't get paid for it. That is not a benefit.
And it is, well, like I said, Tom, like it is a benefit, just like uh uh PTO, it's, it's a benefit. It, it's, it's all within the benefits package in, in every single. Uh with every single employer, so they, they're, they're all, it's, it's, it's.
No, it's not. Sorry, we, we agree to disagree on this.
Sounds good.
And I, and I will say in conversation as well, that was something that was brought up by other councilmen, uh councilpersons as well that. Compromise with your sick time, with your vacation time, look at what you have. It's easy, you know, it's, you, you can take from one or the other, but it's. They are both benefits.
Nope, they are not benefits. The sick leave is paid for by the citizens of West Branch.
And so is vacation too.
And so is vacation, it all is. So, so e- either way, it still is rather than just.
Show me the line item where we, where we uh um. Put down for sick leave. I wanna see the line item. Since it's a benefit.
Everybody fills out a line item on sick leave.
Yeah.
They all do.
Yeah.
No, in our budget.
It's, it's part of the salary packet. It comes out of the same, same area that our vacation time comes out of.
Okay, I'm. There's gonna be only three people here. This day.
So what?
In the forever. Um.
So we're gonna, we're gonna take the day after New Year's off because it's on a weekend?
That's different, Tom. This is a family holiday.
No, it didn't.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
This is not a federal holiday.
I didn't say federal. I said family. It's a family holiday. People are traveling. Your, your comparison there was ridiculous.
All right, anybody, anything else?
I, I have. I kind of looked this over, um. And. I'm willing to give the day, um that's another holiday, but. My, my numbers came out at three dollars and thirty-eight cents, which is equivalent to eight hours. Um. For the year.
We three point three eight?
Three hours, yeah. Yeah, three point three eight hours. Per pay period. Which is equivalent to the eight hours. For the, that's the decimal. Day of. Day, holiday. Instead of the three, three point five, three point three eight.
That based on two thousand and one dollars?
On two thousand eighty, I think is it might be two week.
Based on twenty-six pay trip.
Um is there a pushback then on accepting that versus a three point five? Cause I'm, I think the three point five is a compromise either way. Um. Jody and Colton, you got a thought?
So. Not doing the math and really thinking about it. Are you just subtracting eight hours for what the accrual rate was at this point? Because. You know, as of right now, they were accruing thirteen days. A year with, with what. With what they were doing on that. That included, that included the, the, you don't accrue when you're using vacation and you don't accrue during paid holidays, correct?
No, say, I'm sorry.
Well, listen, you're, you don't accrue. Your simply while you're on vacation. Or during holidays.
You accrued every pay period, no matter.
Do you accrue whether you come to work or not?
I think you do.
Yeah.
I don't like that. Every pay period, you.
Which that's how.
Paid holiday, you're still accruing that three point. Whatever fraction it is during that day, I believe.
So that's the way we've been doing it before, whether you come to work or not, you're earning.
Three point six nine right now is the way it is.
Wow, that's pretty nice. Okay, so with your numbers, eight hours should be the what it is.
That's that's what I came up with, I mean, it was within. Couple points.
We make that an easy three point four, just for discussion, three point three eight. So.
I mean, three point six nine now.
You're right.
Yeah.
All right, so. Good.
So in my opinion, the whole, the way this whole thing got handled way back in. Everywhere or whenever. We, Juneteenth got brought to us. Um. That wasn't talked about between the employees. That was kind of just thrown at. The council without all the employees being involved. So. We made a rash decision without all the employees being. Talked to. Um in my opinion, I think we need to make it right with everyone, all the employees. And um. Give it, give it back to them.
So give them an extra day off every year, Jody, is that what you're saying?
Well.
The employee handbook, the employee handbook specifically says federal holidays. So now we're creating a separate holiday for these people, we're adding another day in when we already had the day in there. So they're getting an extra day.
They had this day before, Tom, they they've always had this day.
No, they have not had this day, Roger, were you listening to me? We gave it to them the in the early two thousands as a reward because we couldn't give them a raise. We're giving them, we're giving them an extra day. We gave them Juneteenth, it was a federal holiday.
On council member, it can only speed one time on each item, so if you want to read that.
Okay, so right now we've got. Trading three point, reducing down to three point five. For this day, do we have? You in favor of that, we're not ready to vote. It's it's either gonna, or we change it to what Jerry's proposing. That might get another vote.
I'm okay with.
I'd be okay with Jerry's proposal. Somebody has to amend that.
Three point five though.
Who was the? Person that uh did the original?
You're what's on you.
But he's he's now going with what?
Five was just going with what um Jerry suggested, originally I was just uh going with the with the um. Yeah, boys wanted, but I I like Jerry's figure better just to compromise to get it going.
I'd like to get it so we could pass something.
So Mike, would you uh?
Mike needs to change.
Would you do an amendment to change it from three point five to three point three eight? I would like to change from three point five to three point three eight, I think that was your number right there.
Yep, that's Jerry's number, so we'll take it.
Second then?
Who was second? Who was second?
Uh Stulman, I'm sorry, Jody was second.
I I guess I we can, I don't know if any, if anybody wants to say anything, somebody employees that are here or.
They may object to that.
For the. Move on to vote.
I agree, the employees ought to get. Some opinion here, because they didn't get to back in May or June, whenever it got brought up.
Didn't have to, Jody, it was in the employee handbook that they get federal holidays off.
I I guess I would like to say that, um. This was proposed the way it was. The way we thought we were gonna be is that there was talk that the council was going to add. Juneteenth. Um and there was a discussion. If that is the case, is anything else could be taken away? And the answer was no, now I'm not sure where the the miscommunication was. But I just wanna make it clear in front of you guys and everybody else. The staff did not bring this. To council or to Adam, it it was not brought to, the staff did not bring this up. It wasn't at the request of the staff.
For Juneteenth.
For Juneteenth. Um and i- i- it's not a comment of of the holiday itself. I just, it it wasn't, it wasn't like the staff said, hey, let's add another holiday. Um it was not like that, so I I just wanna point that out.
Well, that's what it appears to be right now, Heidi. You're getting, you're getting Juneteenth off and you're getting the day after Thanksgiving, and I remind you, Jody, you were the one that said that. Uh we'll give them the Juneteenth off, but you're not gonna take Thanksgiving.
Do you think that a three point five? Did you vote for that? Yeah, I'd like to vote for it, we got three votes for three point five, just the way it's written. Good, let's keep it at that.
Okay.
So nobody seconded your motion then, so in theory, the motion failed, so you're still having three point five.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the resolution.
As as presented.
As presented.
Yes.
Changing sick days to three point five hours or. Period. And including the day after Thanksgiving as a day off.
Councilperson Horrigan?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Sexton?
No.
Dean.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say, I was in for the even swap. When you went from, when you went from the three point five to the three point three eight and you you nixed that because nobody wanted to second it.
Okay.
Then. Just that's where we're at.
If it comes back one more time, the employees will have to let us know. Bring it back again at three point three eight, maybe we'll, it'll get a yes phone. After Thanksgiving. Okay, we're gonna move on. Dome Meadows. Intention Basin's Trails. Donation of that land. Let's talk about that.
Yeah. All the different parcels that are involved, there's an excuse. Feel like a teacher passing out a.
Shall we have a test on? This is a lot of vehicles. Have we approved any of these yet?
No.
These are all in the last.
So we brought this up because we've talked about it, you know, umpteen times and. Never seems like we get to the end point, so um. The the attorneys have passed the paper words back and forth. I'm not sure we've heard a final okay from.
I think.
But uh.
Whatever you want, we'll give it done.
So what's here, you you have an ordinance um that requires developers to give. Five percent of their land to the screed space to the city. So um we had eighty acres that we started with, so five percent would be four acres. And we're would like to give nine acres, nine point three three to the city. Um. They're in four separate parcels. Um. I think there's been three different subdivider agreements that we've agreed that this would happen this way. Um. So we think we've done our part and ready to turn the land over to the city. We. We've been at this for fifteen years. And so we've been taking care of this property all the time. Whereas, you know, we could have donated parts to it as we went. Um and then the city would have had to maintain some of the property over time, but we've kept it. Saved it all to the end. And um ready to turn it over. There's a copy of a warranty deed, I think I put that in there in the back. Shows what we would be signing.
Okay, my comment is, I'm all for this. It's it's um, it just got mowed because it was full of weeds. And not established grasses. It got mowed with a skid loader. If we're gonna take it over and mow it with our lawnmowers. I'd like to see them go through one more mowing cycle. With with decent lawnmowers. You can get get some grasses established and fill in ruts. That that may be there. That that we would be in burden with. Otherwise, I I just think it's not red.
So, hey, Matt's got something.
Okay, Matt. I did go and walked the whole property, all the edges of it, everything that we would mow and it's. There's about three spots that have ruts on it, otherwise it's mobile. It's mobile with our. With our zero.
When your five was zero turn.
Yeah, there was. We went, after we met that one day, we went out there and walked it, there was very few ruts on it. And they were gonna look at the rust there and get them fixed, but yeah, it's actually pretty good. I still talk to you since then.
I disagreed with taking that stuff from the get-go, but at the end of the day, we did it, we're gonna honor our word, period. But I I still agree, even though, even though it's mobile, it. We still got a project, we still got it, got it. How do you put it, hat done. Behind the eight ball, when you let grass get this tall, you mow it two or three times before. It's to a point where it's gonna look like we want it to look like. And it should be. You know, shouldn't hurt to go run out, if you can run it with your mowers, then they can hire somebody to go out there and mow it one more time. And make it look a little bit nicer than it does, because right now it looks like a pasture. And and not even.
That's my objection.
Not even a nice pasture.
I want some decent looking.
Yeah.
Movable surface and it's just. We won't know till spring now, what what.
Where does it look like a pasture? Cause it's all all been mowed, you know, within the last month.
But because the. Yeah, it's it's not, wasn't cut with a nice lawnmower and look like, look like a park, like, you know, look, look like something that. You would want in your yard, I mean, you wouldn't want your yard to look, look like that. I mean. It's it's the center point of our city when you drive right by it, I mean, it's public land that we're taking and. We wanna take pride in it.
That question on some of this, it even. We won't be mowing the banks, would you, would you be mowing some of those things, some of the banks are pretty steep. Most of them, so if we do it like how we do like Presview or any of those other places, we don't mow the bottoms because they get wet. So we'll mow the sides and then the tops of the banks, um. And even like um Lions Field, we kind of do that, cause it stays wet down in one corner. You can't. I mean, the only thing you could do differently is give bluegrass or something more like a lawn grass growing on it. You got that's an issue when you have the type of area that that is. Probably can use all the suit if you and then try to tear it up.
Yeah, it's not gonna look like a golf course by any means, but I mean, it looks like it was. Four foot tall and somebody went through and mowed it.
That's my objection, I I just wish it would look a little better. That's why I would. If you could mow it once more this season and then maybe a couple times in the spring. I'm fine with it.
It hasn't even grown since we had it mowed the last time.
Then a couple times in the spring, I I don't know why that's. Why you can't give us something that looks nice. Being.
How tall's the grass?
Maybe. Four or five inches.
We've had the trail mowed off some.
Why can't it look like the trail, the trail, the top of the trail?
You're asking.
Why can't it all look like that? Look at this. This is just some of the things that we're giving this developer. We may have to do this, but uh. We had tents over backwards around this property. We had a. Everything that was asked of us.
Thank you.
We take a lot of pride in this subdivision. We have been working on this for fifteen years and. Colton, were you when we started this?
I was.
We've had nothing but headache going through with this, some of the other people that come in here and ask for hundreds of thousands of dollars. You guys are handing that out. We. Installed a sewer sewer for them. Okay, you reimbursed us with TIF money. It was three hundred ninety-five dollars, it's been eight years and we still haven't been paid back on that. That is an interest-free loan that you, it would have cost you probably twice as much money. To put that sewer in. To Greenview, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. We put in all the streets on the west side, every street is connected now to Cedar Johnson. We did it slowly. But we did it the way you guys wanted it done, we wanted some changes in it, we wanted some cul-de-sacs, you wouldn't let us do that, we could have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing that. But no, we went along with you guys. There's a hundred and fifty homes. That are built currently. With another possibility of forty-nine, so that's about two hundred homes that we're bringing to the west side. We got a development over here that's got thirty, sixty-five homes, you guys gave them the farm. You gave them the farm to develop that land. So we got about another, we got a hundred and fifty that are built with forty-nine. That uh should be built in the next two or three years. The estimated. Property valuation for this development, seventy to eighty million dollars that we brought into the city. If we hadn't bought that land. And stuck our necks out. Where would the city be now, asking for money? We're given, the city is getting an additional two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. That's your share of the tax revenue. For perpetuity. And it's gonna increase probably every year. Okay? Where would that money come from if we hadn't developed that land? We donated six to seven million dollars of infrastructure, streets, sewers, stormwater. Didn't ask for any TIF money. The only TIF money that we got was a sewer project that we did together. And that's about the only thing that we've done together, and that's what really upsets me, and you can tell it. So to say. Mow this thing for two or three more times. I don't think so, that is not right. We're not voting on this tonight, I understand that's your opinion, okay? But give give me some TIF money, I'll mow it, I'll mow it for the next three years, I'll put a trail in. Let me ask you this. Yeah. Did KLM make some money? Did we, sure. You're making money. You're not gonna do that if you don't make money. You're making money for. You made this endeavor. For no investment at all. This endeavor on. As an investment. You did a good job. You made yourself some money. Right. We did. You did good. We could have lost it all.
Uh. We didn't make an investment.
You you did.
You know, did we not make an investment?
You did?
We, I I know that the the housing incentive that we gave out. Did not go into your pocket, I understand that.
Right.
But you cannot tell me that because of that, that that thing didn't fill up faster and quicker and with nicer homes.
And I appreciate.
So don't come in here and tell us that we didn't give a dead gum thing to you guys. And that we fought you every minute, you have narrower streets, we took, there we took different. Different uh grades and we gave you grade passages, so it's, so it so it worked, we did a.
We demanded a through street because it needed to be a through street. And we didn't argue that. And we didn't argue that. We didn't argue.
Yeah, because it was supposed to be wider.
But it's not a paying thoroughfare. It's compromised. We gotta work, you know.
I mean, there was.
You gotta work.
We did a lot of compromise, but that's what what I'm saying is we did a lot of compromise.
Guys, you haven't given us anything. So now you're asking us to give you nine and a half acres of land.
No, I'm not.
Oh, you don't? Okay, well, you're asking for you're asking for five acres.
No.
You're asking for five acres.
Not you can. You can keep your water retention base and mow it yourself for the rest of your life.
Who wanted a trail to go through there?
That we don't have.
And we before you were gonna take it over, we were asked to remove some trees. We removed that twenty grand out of our pocket just to make you happy.
No, to reduce our liability.
That's fine.
We would have had a huge liability of shedding dying trees.
We didn't push that back.
Falling on people's property.
We didn't push that back.
I know you did.
This is the basin.
Mowing the grass is during one step.
We have to turn this basin over to you one phase at a time. And you would have looked at it.
I would not have taken it across into high school. I would never have taken that. I don't want to take it now because it's it's not presentable.
Well, I'm I'm.
I mean, you don't sell a new car that's dirty and dusty and and it's not detailed and all that because it's not presentable. I'd like to see something presentable. A couple of mowings in the spring doesn't seem like too much to ask.
I I. I have to disagree with both of you guys. I remember when this development started. I'm pretty sure the first phase they were gonna put in was Dawson off of Main Street. The council at that time said no because of the grade of the hill. So what did they do? They had to move their face to a spot that they had to move a ton of dirt. And it took them five years to even sell a lot to get it get it full. After that, it went foreign. I mean, it went good. They they we have asked a lot of these guys. To put a development in our town. Which we've been. We were landlocked and we couldn't grow for years. These guys stuck their net up. I don't think you guys understand what a developer has to put out. Yeah. It's a big risk as a developer. You're sitting on. An infrastructure for two years before you start turning any dollars, before you start turning a lot. We should. We should be thanking these guys for what they've done for our community. To ask them to mow because. Our part. Our our public works can't go out there and a couple of times and mow it. When we take it over. I'm sorry. I know how you feel, Brad.
Okay, speaking of thanking, I forgot. Thank Jody for all the time that you've spent. With our development over the time that you've been here the last fifteen years. I know your time. I don't know when it ends, but.
Tonight.
I appreciate.
Tonight.
Well, thank.
Tonight.
Thank you from.
Thank you.
Chris.
And those things. Every but every time they did a phase in here, we asked them to put a trail in or. They had to put a retention pond in here or there. They had to put in areas. That took up more.
We didn't ask them to put detention ponds in. They have to. It's it's just they have to put those in.
You're right, they do. Did they have to put a trail in? No, they didn't have to. They did. They put a trail in. They graded a trail for us for future.
You been to North Liberty lately in Tiffin?
Do we have a trail?
Trails all over. There are.
Do we have a trail through this town?
No.
So you want them to put a trail that goes about two blocks. We don't have anywhere to go with the trail. They graded it up. They they put the they put the the start of a trail for us.
I have a tendency to agree with Jerry. Well, I think they've paid their dues. That's my opinion.
Okay, what's our next step? We gotta.
We'd like to come back.
We'd like to come back on the agenda.
We'll talk about it again. Um, there's also a couple of things that uh.
You want to gain one of the back bread?
You need one of the packets.
I I had a.
Arrow. There's that.
Oh, there he is.
There was some other stuff we're getting ended up and so we're good. That's all he does.
And what you.
There it is. There it is. Um, we'd also like to get on the agenda for um the curb cuts. Um, that were on Cedar Johnson Road that were cut by mistake. Um, maybe Dave can bring some light to that. I'm pretty sure that. You're familiar with.
Me too, with the lots.
Right.
From Cedar Johnson.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I'd like to have that on the agenda and then also. The that extra water valve um. That was put in on the uh. West side of Cedar Johnson Road. I'd like to discuss that too as well in the next meeting.
Is that something they just just did?
Um, the uh. The valve no leak. We we did that. It was. Larry Lynch did that. He installed it. The valve was twenty-eight hundred dollars and that's not that's not including labor. That extra valve that you guys wanted us to put in. But as far as the curb cut, I don't know if you guys have been out there or not, but along that street. Um, they cut out. Two driveways um to the lot eighteen and nineteen on Cedar Johnson Road. Um, they're about forty-five to fifty feet wide. They were put in as duplex for duplex driveways, about fifty feet wide. They're gonna be single family homes, however. So um. They want credit. I don't know. What are you at? What are you gonna ask?
Well, as we had talked when you met with us that a couple of weeks ago. Is maybe just leave it open until we decide what's gonna go in there. And then come back in and put the the curbs in up to the. Uh, distance that whoever the builder is wants that. You know, there again, it could be. Two years or so, but I don't know if you need to get it off the project or whatnot. If we could put money in escrow, um. I assume it's probably ten grand. I don't. To fix those, repair those.
I can give a price from the contractors with the prices. The discussion.
This is the discussion we had last time. And it got kicked down the road. And I knew this was gonna happen. I don't think as a city, we should be paying for this. Because. I don't know where if it was engineered that way. If it was the contractor did that, but. Those should have never been there.
It was on the plan. Being it was. As far as I know. It was on in on the.
It should have never been though.
So I guess we're asking that it be either put back all the way and they cut it out or I think to save some money. That we put it in after the fact. But there again, it's what it's. It's not our mistake. I I however you guys want to clear it up. There again, mutual. I wanna work with you, Colton.
No, I get it.
Okay.
I'm curious to see how I'm curious to see how this shakes out with with Jerry because I thought mowing the grass wasn't that big a deal, but now we're talking about pouring curds. So now I'll see how this works out.
No, I would like to know why it had curbs in there to begin with because we don't. There was no billing permit. There was. There was nothing.
I I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
And. And it was never slated for a for a duplex anyway, was it? Is there a lot?
Nope, it was it was our it's our tool.
Yeah.
Is what it's owned for. So um. And also, just so you know, we did say hopefully we saved the city some money. They were gonna pour. Those approaches from the street to the sidewalk. And about a day before they were gonna do that, we met with Dave and we told him, hey. We're not, you know, unless you're gonna let us put a duplex in here. We don't need a fifty foot driveway. So put that on hold. I hope you got credit from um Boomerang. You know. At least it didn't cost any extra money. So I'd like to have that on the agenda for next. Any other questions for me? Or Chris?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, Adam. What you got to say about our budget training?
I'm gonna go ahead and pass and move this to the library. It is their hour.
You can do it next time.
Um, I will do it next time on Tuesday. I will tomorrow. I will talk with department heads about this. So.
I've got some paper copies of the report that was just handing out, but I think you guys should have them in your packets there at the very end. Uh, hopefully this will be kind of short and a little bit fun. I don't have like a ton of numbers and stuff. Um, I just wanted to kind of. Um, share like where the library has been lately and highlight some of the things that we're proud of from the last fiscal year. Uh, we have had a lot going on. Um, the fiscal year was a little bit weird for us because we changed our programming person. Have us like partway through the year. So we had a lull for a couple of months without. Like any programs. There was very minimal programming, like one story time a week. So some of our counting numbers are a little bit weird. Um. But uh, it doesn't show you the full picture. Um, our door count was down because of that and didn't have classrooms coming in for storytimes. Um, and our programming numbers are kind of wonky. But after the switch, we definitely saw things pick back up again in the spring and into the summer. Um, and I just want to say that uh we had over seven hundred more people attend our summer library programs. This summer than the year before. Um, it was over thirteen hundred people for the summer, which is just awesome. So. Um, things have been picking up even though I can't put a little up arrow next to the programming numbers yet. Um. Including the summer events, we had two hundred programs for the year. And in case you're a little confused, when I say programs, I mean our storytimes, the early out activities after school. We have science nights, crafts that we do. Um, on early out days, we have sometimes up to seventy kids in the library. It is. Loud and chaotic up there and it's a big job for Mary trying to find things to keep them occupied after school. So. Um, that is definitely something that we put a lot of effort into and it's a lot of work for her. Um, for grownups, our programs include book clubs, movie nights. We've been having presenters come and give like talks and classes on things. Um, we had a murder mystery dinner party that was so popular, we actually had to turn people away because we didn't have room at the table anymore. So um, we do have adult things too, and that's all under the programming umbrella. So when we say programs, we mean all of those special events and fun things. Um, one trend that we were able to track because of just the way things worked out was that. Uh, we're actually signing more people up for library cards. The number of new cards we created was up in the last fiscal year. Um, we got a hundred and twenty-six new people signed up. Uh, some of those are new people that move in. A lot of times people come in before they even have their driver's license changed. But sometimes it's older people too that have been around forever and then they hear about the things that we're doing and they want to get a library card. Um, the majority of our cardholders are from West Branch City Limits and rural Cedar County. Um, we have almost thirteen hundred accounts just from West Branch City residents. So uh, we were just talking about the the population, so I can't say what percentage that is for sure, but it's a pretty big. Uh, part of the the population of West Branch have library cards. Um, in addition to everything that we have in the the building. Um, people who live in the West Branch City Limits or rural Cedar County can use their library account to get free eBooks and audiobooks. Um, I've talked about that before. I think last year I definitely highlighted that. Um. The trends from last year have been continuing. The circulation of our physical books and DVDs is dropping a little bit. It's not plummeting. It's not going down a lot, but it is dropping a little bit and our digital books keep going up. Um, last year we had tons of people reading audiobooks. Um, that was kind of the trend. This year we've noticed that the eBooks are catching up too. I don't know if it's TikTok and BookTok and people are just whipping through those eBooks, reading them on their phones, but. Um, they have been more popular. And it's not just like techie young people that like the eBooks. I recently got a phone call from an elderly person who lives in the West Branch City Limits. Um, but they're in a wheelchair and they can't come to the library and they wanted to know if they could sign up for a library card over the phone. And then read books on their devices at home and we were able to help them out with that. Um, so it's a pretty great service for uh different areas of the population, not just not just super techie people. Um, everything is super expensive right now, so I did highlight some numbers of what people save by using the library instead of um. Buying things themselves. Uh, we think that the average person, just based on the number of cards we have, saves three hundred and seventy dollars a year. But um, that's the average and I was able to check our software and we have patrons who saved over seven thousand six hundred dollars. By checking stuff out instead of buying it. Um, that's video games, that's TV shows, like watch a whole series of a TV show. Um, and sometimes it's just large quantities of books. Some of our families that just check out twenty books at a time. They get up there into the thousands of dollars saved. Um, and those kids are are big readers, so they go through a lot of books. Uh, we also have besides books, we have cake pans for special occasions. Um, how often do you need like an Iowa Hawkeye's cake pan? You can just come get one from us. You don't need to buy it yourself. Uh, we also have board games, puzzles, um toys and some other electronics to check out as well. So it's not just books up there. We do have other things to offer. Um, for the people that do still want books and movies and TV shows. Um, one of the things that we're proud to offer is free interlibrary loan services. Um, so that saves the library money because we don't have to buy everything that people request. We can just say, well, we don't have that here, but we can borrow that from someone else. Um, and we don't even have to pay postage to borrow things from other libraries. Because the State Library of Iowa uses some of their funding to coordinate delivery service um among. Uh, public libraries all throughout the state. So our postage costs have gone way down since the state library did this. And uh, we were able to borrow six hundred and twenty-nine things from other libraries. Um, just in the last fiscal year. So that is a a huge helpful service and. The state library uses some of their funding for that and their funds are being cut as well. So that does trickle down to to us, but. They have committed to um keeping libraries, keeping that service available for libraries. Um, besides checking things out, the staff up at the library, um me and Kat and Mary, we answer a lot of questions. Uh, last year we made it a goal to keep better track of how many times we look up things. Uh, because that's something that we submit to the state library and it was over eight hundred times. Um, and that's things like looking up books in our catalog, that's answering research questions for people. That's tech help if they need technology help. And that doesn't even count some of the things that we know off the top of our head, like. Who wrote The Hunger Games? Where can I find that book? So um, we definitely uh. Do a lot of like customer service help and and help people with their with their research. Um. Another research thing that I wanted to highlight, and this will be interesting for Gregory, is that we helped coordinate the digitization of the West Branch Times. Um. For a few years, we had the first few decades available, but people were frequently asking us, okay, well, this ends in the thirties. How do I get ones from the sixties? Um, and we got uh an anonymous donation, which was very generous to finish the entire project. So now you can go online and search the West Branch Times by keyword. Um, and the entire run from the eighteen, when did it start? Eighteen nineties? All the way up to, I think, twenty twenty-three is where it ends. Um, you can just look up your last name. You can look for. Uh, other keywords. Um. And it's pretty cool. Um, I was, I I think it should be um functional now. I was still getting some errors on some pages, but you should be able to go check it out. And I do have the website down there for you if you want to go see if you're a. If your grandparents are listed in the West Branch Times anywhere. Um, one other trend that I wanted to talk about is that people are using the library computers a lot. Um, in the last year, we noticed that our in-house computer usage went up and our Wi-Fi usage went down. So that just means that it's really important for us to keep investing in the library equipment because it's getting a lot of use and it needs to be safe and. Uh, functional for everybody to use. Um, and unfortunately, the cost of computers is like skyrocketing. We used to be able to get computers for seven, eight hundred dollars and now some of them are over a thousand dollars. So that is something that we need to um continue to flex our budget going forward. Um, other than that, um. You can see the graph of the expenditures of the library. Um, because of the way the staffing changes played out, our overall expenditures were actually less than the year before. And the staff and benefits proportion, those slices are smaller than they were last year. Um, but we did spend more money on building maintenance, on technology, um because of our investments in in. Computers and some of the projects and then also collections because those eBooks and audio. And then also collections because those eBooks and audiobooks do cost a lot of money. Um, some of the building projects that we did that cost a lot of money were installing uh, proper drainage pipes behind the library. That project was done. Um, and that has been needed for many years and that was taken care of. Um, our our security camera system um, completely stopped working. So we replaced that and we have an updated system now that's accessible like um, on phones. So we don't have to be in the building to to check on the security cameras. Um, we replaced the access door to the community room. So local groups like the American Legion have access to the meeting room outside of library hours. It has a, an upgraded Wi-Fi door lock on it. So even if no one's in the library, we can actually let people into the the community room. And we upgraded our fire alarms to use uh, cellular technology instead of relying on the phone lines. Um. Some of the projects that still need to be done are um, improving the outdoor spaces. Um, the picnic tables need uh, some sort of platforms or something under them. Um, and there are some sidewalk repairs that need to be done as well as some uh, damaged tile inside the library. Um, and then there could be some future maintenance issues as well. Uh, one of our furnaces is very old. And uh, our automatic doors sometimes need to be repaired. So that's just something that I want to keep my eye on. Okay, I really breezed through that, but does anybody have any questions?
I just had a comment, you know, when most libraries around the state are dying, you're really doing great things. And you know, it, you really provide a service because you get the kids off the street and into the library and things like that. So um, I'm really impressed with what Nick did and I'm real impressed how you were doing since you took over that responsibility. It's um, I think you're quite an asset to the community. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. We just had some uh, middle schoolers and high schoolers in the library after school today in the teen room instead of running around outside, so. It's nice to see.
All right. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Good job. Oh, Kevin, anything?
Yeah, talking nothing to me. How about?
Anything, Adam?
Um, I just want to apologize to the public and to those who don't come to council meetings a lot. And apologize to staff. But this is by far the worst council meeting I've ever been in. And so our residents deserve a lot better than how this meeting went tonight.
Anything, Dave? Staff, anybody? Hey, I've just got two things. In the coming months, we're gonna um. Talk about how hired me fire chief. Kevin's leaving soon. Another year, we'll have to figure out what we're gonna do. Um, the flagpoles that you see downtown, there's been a little discussion. We'd like to remodel those. The city doesn't own them. We're not sure who owns them. Jessica and the American Legion and uh, I mean, Main Street, West Branch and the American Legion and Alliance Club, I met with them. We're gonna try to order some new flagpoles and make them look better. But we may have to, a tiny ask from the city to either clean out the holes that are in the sidewalk. Make it a little simpler.
What are we talking about? What the Legion puts out, you mean?
Yeah, the wooden flagpoles, the wooden ones that look real nice. I'm gonna try to find a bid for new wooden poles. We don't want conduit. We want wooden, so. Um. That's all I got. Anybody, anything else?
I do. Like to thank Jody for, for years of service here. Thank you. Just got us two meetings left.
No, I know.
She's about two minutes.
I'm done tonight. After the night, I'm done.
Understood.
We, I'm not gonna be here at the next meeting. We swear. Without me being here.
She can't start until Sandra can't start till we first.
Okay. Thank you, Jody. I've been a good advocate for your neighborhood. Well, so um. That's that's what you need to take away from.
Can I get the dead ends signed and put back at orange and six, please? Thank you.
For last act.
Thank you, Jody, for your service.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.